Okay, good afternoon everybody for another It's in the Ballot show. And today we've got two fantastic candidates here on standing of why they want to be now. Correct me if I get this wrong, Tia Poo Oa Maori ward, is that how you say it? How do you say it better?
Tipu'au?
Tapu'au, Tapi, Tapu'au, is that correct?
Tipu'au.
Au, so Tipu'au, I should know that, I'm someone who's got the last two letters and that in their last name, I should know that one, yes. Oh, Nick, can you roll on the opening credits? And coming here live from the Evelyn Warren Room of the Square Arts Community Centre here in Palmerston North, right where the train station used to be until they moved out to Milson in the 1950s. We have got Debbie and Bonnie here who have decided to put their feet to the It's in the Ballot fire and participate in our, was it in our show, answering the questions that the community of Palmerston North have asked. How are you both there this afternoon?
Really good, thank you, ngamahi, very excited.
And it's great to see two wahinees challenging the Maori ward. Okay, so let's kick off with opening statements. Debbie, would you like to start off first?
Ngama na inga reo rauranga tiramaa nairaa te mihinunui ki a koutau e whakarongo mainai. Ko tēnai tētahi mokapuna o rangi tāne, onga te rangi o tu fare tua e mihia tuana ki a koutau. Ko tēnai tētahi mea nunui ki a pooti tātou te iwi maori, ki a noho tātou i te tepu. Nooreira, aha kua nga takia te wa, karere nga mihiki a koutau katao, ki a tu tangata tātou te iwi maori.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and talk to you today. As currently a councillor and deputy mayor of Palmerston North City, which is a big privilege. I think one of the things that I feel really thrilled about is the opportunity to represent my people, their values, their perspectives and also their aspirations to ensure that they are integrated with council decisions. And as I mentioned before, it's a privilege having been born and raised here, having raised my own tamareki as well. My whanau have been really involved and active throughout the generations here, like met so many others of our iwi and of our whai de whanau, those who call Palmerston North City home. Nooreira, tēna noho ki koutau, kia ora.
Thank you for that, Bonnie?
Kia ora koutau, he mihimaana ki a koutau i te naiahi. Ko Boni Kuru'aho, he uro o ngati kaha nunui ki tamati araki nui, kaha nunui rangi tāne ki whai de rapa arato ko ngati tua rangi tirao. So a big, big thank you for having me today. I'm really excited about being given the opportunity to run and also to be alongside someone so amazing. So thank you very much. I am here to represent, or wanting to represent probably people that are away from home. There is a, there's a large lot of us in the Manu'a too that were lucky enough to be born and raised here and love this place and have raised our tamareki here and would really like to give back. Yeah, so just want to put my hand out there, make sure that I I give the voice to people that are sometimes not heard, so disenfranchised people, people that are not connected to politics or not engaged with with the process or they don't even know how important it is and how it affects them. So yeah, I'd just like to give a voice to everybody, so all voices are valuable and all voices are valued. So ngamahi.
Thank you for that. So now we're going to do things here a little bit differently this show now. Because we've only got two candidates here, instead of going through and giving them, one person asks one, answers one question and not the other. We've decided where I think the 28 box questions should be answered by both candidates. Cause I'm pretty sure you're going to bring up some brilliant answers, not just for your voters, but for the whole community to know where you are and fingers crossed to take success on the Maori ward referendum. And I'll be honest on that one, I'm also doing that myself. So it's my little bit of what do you call it, breaking my political neutrality on there. I always will do that for Maori wards, but it's about the only time you see me do it. Okay. So one minute to answer each of these questions. So the first question we've got here is F for Foxtrot. There has been much media coverage about candidates' behaviours towards their follow candidates over the country. What personal, what are your personal values that make you a suitable candidate to be a councillor? Let's kick off with Debbie.
Tēnā kui, well, first of all, straight up, I don't believe in dirty politics. I think that people should be respectful and responsible, particularly if they're serving people of their city and their electorate. I think that it's important that we are role models to those that we represent and to the future generation. I think it's really important that we give our very best and put our best foot forward and that we're transparent in terms of our thoughts and what we support as well. I think that's an important matter. I believe I have conducted myself in a way that reflects that. And I also think that it's important, having served in public office before, I'm experienced in that. So I do understand what's required and I also want to give back in a positive manner.
Okay, Bonnie?
Kia ora, same question. Kia ora, so how, what I think about, you know, I'm absolutely against dirty politics and just as a person in general, I'm not really into hurting other people or making other people feel lesser or yet just absolutely against it. In terms of what values I bring, I definitely bring aruha to the table. I have a big, long network of people that I care about, from people from all walks of life, all experiences. So I bring that with me, whakapapa, so relationship and also from the past, present and future. Cause relationship is everything and making sure that we have a relationship with everybody. And then the other thing, kuaia tiaki tanga, so I believe in looking after our finua, our people. And yeah, looking after the gifts that we are given and that includes in the council. The, yeah, definitely the gift of taking care of things that take care of others. That's me, ngamahi.
Fantastic answers. It's duty politics is a very nasty thing and it's a behaviour trait that should not actually be accepted by any council or council candidate and any person who says that it should be. My opinion and along with many others is it doesn't belong in the council chamber. Yeah, okay, we've got question E. Do you think the council should be involved in providing social housing and if so, how? Bonnie, would you like to go first?
Yeah, I absolutely believe that council should be providing social housing. Number one is great for investment. So if we're going to grow our economy, we should be looking at land. Land is not being made every day, it is a resource that is very, very valuable in terms of looking after the people in our community that need it. Absolutely, 100%, that's what we should be doing. Everybody in Palmerston North should have a home. And I think though it should be maybe specialised, so maybe we only look at doing one bedrooms. And that's just in terms of low wear and tear, less maintenance. Yeah, but no, definitely believe in social housing.
Debbie?
I feel quite strongly about this matter and I know that in council, I voted for social housing. I think we should care about every person who lives in Palmerston North and within our country as well. We shouldn't have homelessness, we shouldn't have people living in the cold, on the streets, not safe. And I think that it's important that we as a society care about people, they're our own and that we look after them. And I think that this needs to be something that central government should take responsibility for. However, in the absence of their support, then obviously local government, city councils are picking that up and doing so in a good way as well. I know that we've got many social housing complexes around here and they're communities and they're thriving and they're doing really, really well and we need to support them. Ngamahi.
Okay, let's go for P for Papa. Do you support the fitting of solar panels to council buildings to offset daytime electricity use? Debbie?
Definitely, love this ko papa. And we've got members on council who've also been elected members who've been very strong in their advocacy of this. We need to utilise the environment, we need to look after our planet. And I know when my children went to Kohanga Reo and Kura Ko Papa, that they they would, there was a saying they had, ma wai hei tiaki a papa tuanuku, who will look after our mother earth? And the answer was, ma tato, all of us. And that's one strategy, using solar power, if we embrace it, we could do such a lot. That's one strategy to help our planet and it just makes sense. I mean, we've got a lot of council buildings around the place. I'd be keen to have them everywhere and further extend it as well and subsidise for homes as well. But I think that, I don't want to let central government off too much. Kia ora.
And Bonnie?
Kia ora, I agree, I support solar panels. It's definitely a good way to use a natural resource to power our communities, also to offset costs and to reduce costs for ratepayers. I would be probably asking about the capital cost of that, how much that would cost to set up and whether it would be viable. If you make your money back off them, all of those sorts of questions that I'm unsure of, but in in theory, absolutely. Also where we would store the power is really important, where the power would be stored to make sure that they were hazard risks and stuff like that. So just, I just have to have a really good look over it, but in theory, absolutely support solar panels.
Thank you for that, I love the vibe. Okay, we've got U for Uniform. What should council's priorities be when making grants to the community? Debbie?
This is an interesting one because I know in my three years at council, we've had more applications for grants than the money we have to give. And so therefore there's a need out there and I felt that they were all very worthy. However, I think that the panel who sit and listen to those grant applications, they come up with priorities that are based on our strategic priorities. Sometimes organisations can get funding elsewhere, but if they can't, then we might be the only option that they have. And if they're giving back to the community in a positive and meaningful way, then that's something we would rather see continue or start rather than to leave them flailing and not actually get off the ground or to continue with the wonderful work that they are doing. I think clearly it's people, it's got to be particularly those who are more vulnerable for those who need to be, remain connected. And I think it's an important issue for all of us. Kia ora.
And Bonnie?
I completely support Debbie. I believe I come from a social work background, so I completely would support disenfranchised people having more resource to, to community funding, grants funding. Also maybe given a priorities and a need scale, I'm not sure what that looks like. But yeah, I think disenfranchised people, our Pacifica communities, Maori communities, kids in probably lower socio-economic environments over in some of our other, you know, some of our areas that get overlooked sometimes, maybe Roslin and Highbury probably, but I mean, that's not specific. But yeah, needs based, lots of needs based grant funding. Ngamahi.
Okay, thank you for that. Question X. Would you consider advocating for more safe pedestrian crossings on our main arterial routes such as Pioneer Highway? Bonnie? Just, just so we get not sticking to the same order?
Yeah, I would absolutely support more pedestrian crossings. I've got a grandchild on a main trunk and to be fair, when I go outside, it's scary. There's nowhere to cross, this is down Vogel Street, so it's, it's not Pioneer Highway, but similar similar sort of traffic flow. I definitely support more pedestrian crossings, I don't know why they're not there. Ngamahi.
And Debbie?
Kia ora, like Faiboni, I too support that because motorists aren't the only ones who use roads. And if we're looking after papa tuanuku, then we need to make sure that we've got the ability and the infrastructure to allow people to walk safely, to cycle safely. We have lots of children on, in our community. We want to make sure that they are looked after when they're going to school, that anyone who's on the roads, whether they be cyclists or motorists or even if they're crossing the road, are safe. And I know that we have research that indicates that what happened down Fevison Street has turned out to be although very controversial, I supported that because I see, I teach there and I see those students often struggling getting across the road and pedestrians. But it's important that we make our environment safer for everyone, especially on those arterial roads. Kia ora.
Just as an outer towner, Fevison Street, is it one of the streets that is where the warehouse used to be?
No.
No, okay, no, no, I remember there was something project, riding project done on that street that was also controversial at one stage. Oh, is it Cuba Street, that one's Cuba Street. Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm not sure, where is the warehouse over in there now?
It's on our Pioneer Highway, that's one of the entrances.
Oh, okay, I should know that, that's actually, you just, yeah, I remember.
You must have passed it.
I was going to sit there and say, I remember breaking down Nick's door to it actually. So yes, no, that's me having a brain fade there. Okay. Question I, which I think will carry on exactly from where the last question was. Do you support implementing safer speed limits around our schools within the Palmerston North City territorial limits? Debbie?
Yes, actually this is something dear to my heart, is having been a school teacher and a principal for over 40 years. I can say that I do think that when it's school time, when the students are going to school or coming out, that those are important times when people do need to slow down and be cognisant of our students, of our young people going to school or leaving school. Not necessarily all day and every day, but I do think that there are times when we need to make sure that everyone slows down. It has been contentious all over the place actually, just not only in our area. But if anything, if I was asked, would you prefer that they slow down? Definitely, I don't think people are in that much of a rush that they could sacrifice the safety of other people. So I do think that we need to put safety first. Kia ora.
And Bonnie?
I agree, they should definitely be slower, especially during peak times. So you know, seven till 10 and 12 till 3 or something like that. So it's definitely a safety concern. I don't think there would be any reason to not have it slowed down, especially when they're leaving and coming to school. Yeah, ngamahi.
Okay, question M for Mike. Concerning the central government messaging about councils being a core reason for cost of living crisis due to wasteful spending, do you think this is the case? Why or why not? Let's kick off with Debbie.
No, I don't think that's the case. I think that that's been overly critical. I think that, that councils are doing their very best to make sure that they look after the community that they serve. I think that the issues regarding infrastructure, more recently local water done well, is something that has fallen on to our ratepayers when indeed, and council getting a bad rap for it, when indeed it's actually a tax, a central government tax. And I think that we need to make sure that people are aware of that as well. And I don't believe, we have a certain amount of funding, resourcing. I don't believe anyone in council wants to see the rates go through the roof. We realise that people are struggling, we realise that we want to get the best value for money. However, there are some things you can, we don't want to cut into muscle, you can cut off fat, but you can't cut into muscle. Kia ora.
And Bonnie?
I absolutely disagree with council being the problem with wasteful spending for the cost of living crisis. It's, I mean, if you look at from what farmers receive for milk to what they export it for, is just an example, there is, that's not central, that's not local government's fault. They operate on the smell of an oily rag, they do everything they possibly can to keep costs down. I think, you know, the council does do the best it possibly can for all of the people in the Rarue. I don't know if I should go into what I believe it is. I think that might be a little bit controversial, but I don't think it's local government, New Zealand. I would say it firmly sits with central government. Thank you.
Okay, let's go for Q for QBQ. What budget line items would you remove to help bring down rates in Palmerston North without disrupting basic services? Bonnie?
This has been really tough for me, when I was looking through all of the line items, everything in there is essential. Like there's not very much what I would call wasteful spending. You know, the council does break it down into a very readable format so that you can clearly see where everything is going. I did see there was the recreation is quite high, but in saying that, that's important as well. I just, this is terrible, seeing as I'm sitting in the art centre. I went straight to arts and that is terrible, but I was just thinking, you know, if we are investing in arts, we're investing in people, which is fantastic. But I do believe when I look at some of the things we've invested in. You know, if you look at Maori tang or fa kairo, there's this story in whakapapa tuat. When you look at some things like maybe the gnome, I was just thinking, where did that come from? But I don't, I don't know, I haven't got a firm cut on that. I just had a look at a few things and had a few questions, but yeah, that's me, thank you.
Debbie?
Kia ora, I can say that when it came to the budget, that elected members deliberated long and hard and it wasn't just over one or two sessions. And I agree with Faiboni that when you look at those budget lines, they're crucial. And we certainly went through those with a fine tooth comb. I think social wellbeing is huge. Some people say, oh, maybe we do away with the parks, maybe we do away with the arts or other things or we lower those. However, we've got people who can't afford to take their children to places other than the local parks, to the reserves, to play sport in. And those facilities help keep people connected, they help them express. When you've got a community that is healthy and connected, then that, then lots of other issues disappear. And I'm thinking that we are probably at the best we can be for the moment. Kia ora.
And we've got O for Oscar. Issues around climate change is becoming more important. What are your thoughts on supporting an anaerobic digestion of food waste to produce biogas similar to the plant in Repara? Please note, this is not an incineration of general waste. Bonnie?
I think that's a fantastic idea, like if we've got some sort of wasteful product or you know, that we're just wasting, why can't we turn it into something that's useful and productive for our city? I think we need to look at more of those options, like what are we, what can we utilise to to either, you know, create a resource that is usable or that can create or generate income for our whanau. Like I don't, it's a fantastic idea, I think it's doing really well. And depurau, I know that the outlay is quite expensive, but if it's going to regenerate that money again, why not? Yeah, that's me, thank you. Ngamahi.
And Debbie?
I think it's a wonderful initiative and I think that, well, I know that Palmerston North City Council have investigated that and talked about that. You're right, the initial outlay could be costly. However, if we look at the sustainability and the long-term benefits, then I think that it's proven to be something of value. And it's also about protecting our environment, making sure we're not wasteful, making sure that we make the most of recycling, whether that be food waste, whether that be other kinds of waste. And it would also ensure that we are sending a very clear message and looking after papa tuat, looking for the future generations. We've got children who are looking up to us for their role modelling. In fact, some of them are saying, why aren't you doing that now? And I want to make decisions for the mokapuna as well, that they'll look back on and say, that was a good call. Kia ora.
Okay, we've got V for Victor, get the right slide on screen. If you are elected as a councillor, would you decelerate council spending on unwanted grain projects and concentrate on vital necessary infrastructure needs such as roading? Debbie?
Kia ora, well, first of all, Kilda. Well, first of all, I suppose, um, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. Some people saying it's an unwanted or grandiose idea, uh, might not be seen by someone else. I do realise that there are times that we're living in, um, hard times, uh, things aren't that easy. However, by the same token, we've still got to make progress. We've still got to prepare for the future. And we can't put everything on hold. That might be a false economy to think, okay, let's not spend anything for the next while. And then when things, we know there's an economic, uh, cycle and when things are going upwards, uh, then suddenly all hands on deck and we realise, gee, we could have actually made a progress, even just a little bit by doing something, um, a bit of a time, at a, at a time. I think that getting agreement from the wider community is important for giving us the mandate to move on those things. Kilda.
Uh, Bonnie?
Uh, I think it's time to, um, grow and expand, like we should be looking at opportunities. I don't think it, it serves anybody to sit still and, um, you know, prices increase. If you don't do something now, it's gonna be way more expensive in ten years in terms of materials, things like that. So if we're wanting to do it and it's a project that's, um, gonna be valuable to our community, we should definitely be looking at that. Um, we should be staging our infrastructure. So instead of just dumping big, lots of money, we should be planning and staging the infrastructure to make sure it gets done. Prioritising it, not doing the same roads twice that have already been done, that are good. So it's, it's just things like that. Really, I'm quite a practical person, um, but in terms of growing and expanding our community, that's exactly what we need to be doing. Um, great things come with great ideas and sometimes, a lot of the time, you need to just do it, is what I think. So with a course consultation from, from everyone else, but yeah, namahi.
Okay, we've got question H here. Do you support the central government introducing rate caps onto local authority and why? Let's kick off with Bonnie.
Uh, just from all the research I've done on it, everybody says that it's not a great idea because if you cap it, um, later on, you might get yourself into trouble and you've capped it and now there's nothing you can do about it. Um, that's just what I've read. Um, in terms of what I know about it, it would be great if it was capped. So I live rurally and it's, you know, it's gonna skyrocket. Um, but I think in terms of looking after everybody, um, we need to do what's the best suited for everybody. Um, I don't know if that's rate caps. I'd, I'd say maybe, probably not. Namahi.
Uh, Debbie?
I think this is a smokescreen, to be honest. I think that, um, central government have, are using, um, councils, local government, um, as a way of trying to devolve their responsibility. I think there's expertise within the local community, within, uh, local government decision-making. And that's been overlooked, that's been undermined. And I think that it's important that governments, central governments stay in their lane. But part of their responsibility is to fund local governments to the appropriate level and to do so equitably, so that we can get on with doing what we do do very, very well. And, um, it does concern me that central government are constantly, um, putting in place things to make life difficult for local government. And I think they should wear some of that heat.
And an example of out there of a city that went effectively what would be called administrative bankruptcy was Birmingham. And it was the UK's biggest city that had, went bankrupt basically because of rate caps. And ironically, when the commissioners came in, guess what was removed? The rates caps that led to the problem in the first place. So it's been tried in the UK and not really gone down particularly well. Yeah, and I'd love to actually know what they would want to cap on. Is it the total revenue increase? As in if you sit there and say have an extra thousand homes paid into the pot, should that be classed as part of the cap? Or is it just a percentage on the rates bill that goes up? Because, you know, more customers paying in shouldn't be treated as the same, it shouldn't be treated as a bad thing because in private business, it's a good thing. You know, if you're sitting there selling, you know, selling, you know, having an extra thousand customers coming in, it's a good thing and the shareholders like it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, S for Saera. Palmerston North City has some cycleways along its arterial routes throughout the district. Is this a core function that Palmerston, Palmerston North City should provide or a nice to have? Bonnie?
Oh, I'm a little bit split on this. So, um, I think it's a nice to have, um, because all the cyclists I know actually cycle on the road. They're just sucking up the roadway anyway. Um, but, um, I think maybe the design of it is not great. I'm not really a fan of the, um, the big things that we have down the side, those boxes and all sorts of stuff. The plana boxes, I'm like, what are those? Um, but I, you know, people do come here to cycle. So people like the, the cycleways, they love the outskirts, um, you know, out in the, where are they? Over a messy, places like that. People use our river tracks, um, and love it. I mean, there's, it's sometimes it's hard to find, you know, really great things about Palmerston North in terms of, um, you know, big events or, um, big features here. So the cycleways have become a, a bit of a feature for, for tourists and people that are visiting. So that's always good. Yeah, namahi.
Debbie?
Um, I believe that we need to be catering to people who are wanting to cycle. We know that that's an activity that is healthy. We know that it's an activity that is growing in popularity. And also people come in now as cycling to work, as cycling to school, as cycling to the sports events or other meetings. And that's a good thing to see. And there's less pollution in the air when that happens. But it also means that, um, our people are moving around and we want them mobile. We wanna support that initiative of health and wellbeing. And I think we do have a responsibility to make sure that along with other councils, that we can sort of invest in that, uh, in the infrastructure so that we have a collaborative approach to making sure, whether that be from fielding to Palmerston North on a cycleway or from Ashes to Palmerston North or from Longburn, that we work together to make things happen and better. Kilda.
Now, not, not so common for a city council, however, there is a bit of an agricultural area, an organic vegetable, uh, vegetable growing that I know of, because I had a friend who used to get stock from there. But it's, uh, in the rural areas, should rural communities have a say in the operation of council-owned rural water schemes? Debbie? Oh, sorry. Oh, C for Charlie. Sorry about that, Nick.
Kilda, I think that it is important that, um, well, I like the notion of people having a say within the community about things that impact on them and their lives. And I think that we should have the opportunity to listen to them and, uh, that they should be heard. I think that, uh, that helps councillors and, um, the whole process goes smoother. And also there's transparency when that does happen. I think it's important that we do listen to people and take that on board when it comes to making the decisions that will impact on them. So certainly, yes, I do think we should, um, rural, uh, communities should have a say in that as well. Thank you.
Uh, Bonnie?
Um, I live rurally and I definitely think, um, rural communities should have a say in, um, in the way that anything works rurally. So if you don't live in the community, you don't actually know what affects you and what doesn't affect you. And rural is very, very different from city living. Um, lots of us have town water and the ones that do have tank water, um, you know, we pay water rates as well. So, you know, we actually have extra costs that other people don't have. Um, so I think it's vital that anybody that is affected by a decision is, um, is consulted and, you know, that their, um, what they are saying is given, uh, some sort of merit. Yeah.
Uh, wanna ask, um, with living rurally for you, Bonnie, um, are you on a tank or mains or trickle feed or the?
Oh, so I'm on a, um, we've got a tank, but we're on town supply. So we're one of the only places out towards Tokamalu, um, ways that are on town supply, um, which is actually quite unusual out that way, I think. So we pay our standard rates plus we pay water rates as well.
Okay, is that water meter or is that just the water, the fixed water charge?
Uh, it's a water meter. So we metered, yeah, so it's expensive, you know, and if you've got stock and stuff like that and you're on, um, town supply, like it's huge. Usually people just use it as a last resort, but for townies that have moved to blocks, it's like, it's vital.
Yeah, yeah, no, I remember my days in Hokio Sands Road and, um, that's why my landlord called it trickle feed because it took fourteen days to fill the water tank while being used from, uh, empty to full. Because part of the conditions of having that was you had to have a tank because the pressure was garbage and that. But I mean, hey, they managed to pump it all the way out to Hokio Beach, so we can't complain, you know? Uh, I know my dad never was on it though, and he's still at the house at Hokio Beach. Now, we've got B for Bravo. Do you support political party endorsements of local government candidates? Bonnie?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure, but what I did think about it is it's actually important for people, I think, to see political alignment sometimes because then you can make sure that the table's balanced. Um, so if you had no idea where anyone was sitting, um, you know, you're unsure if it's, if it's a balanced table and I think it's important to be balanced. Um, there needs to be diverse opinions and, um, yeah, and if you have political or if you have, you know, backing from a political party, you can clearly see where people sit. Um, which is not necessarily a bad thing. It's a, it's probably a good thing. At least we know. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Debbie?
I'm proudly affiliated to, to Pāti Maori and, um, and I think that it's important that people know that. It's part of their transparency. It's part of making public your private theory and it also holds me accountable to my people and to the values and perspectives and aspirations of Iwi Maori as well. So, yeah, I do think it's important that people share, um, where they're at. However, I know that on local government and council, we make decisions for our city, um, and across the board and with the best intentions. So, um, yeah, I think it's important that people do disclose who they're affiliated with and I'm very proud to be to Pāti Maori. Kilda.
Okay, we've got G for golf. The government and the taxpayers' union have been accusing councils of being irresponsible with large rate, uh, percentage rate increases. What are your views? Debbie?
Do you know what? I think that that's a, a huge insult to councils all around the country. Because they forget that elected members live in their community. Elected members also have their families in that community. They're part of the community. Why would they go out of their way to hurt their community? And I come back to this notion of saying that central government have a responsibility, but it seems in more recent times that they've tried to devolve that responsibility and pass blame on to councils. In fact, you know, even mooting the idea that maybe they do away with councils, which would be absurd and ridiculous. Because local ideas, local solutions, people who live locally know best what their community needs. They just need to be resourced appropriately to meet that need. And, um, yeah, I feel quite strongly about that. Kilda.
Uh, Bonnie?
Uh, I don't think that anybody on council would go forward, um, with the, uh, notion or the, um, the want to hurt other people in their community. I, I don't think that they would purposely raise rates if they didn't have to. But something's obviously sitting in front of them and that's what needs to be done. Um, yeah, I, I don't think that's even a, I don't even know why that would be, um, a thought. I don't think anybody goes into positions trying to, uh, make things harder for other people. Thank you. And in the, in the community, so they actually would be raising the rates for themselves. So I don't know why, that just doesn't make any logical sense at all, that they would be trying to hurt themselves by increasing rates. Thank you.
Yeah. A very, very good point there. And yes, you are so right. Why would you want to hurt yourself and your fellow members of the community? Yeah. Okay, we've got Y for Yankee. Auckland Council has recently shifted to taking away recycling bins of people who mix in general waste with their recycling. Should Palmerston North City Council consider removing recycling bins for doing the same thing? Bonnie?
Uh, no, I don't think punishment is the way to make people change behaviour. I don't think removing the bins is going to help anybody that has, um, you know, usually if they've put waste in the bins, it's because they don't have anything to put the waste into. Uh, so maybe we need to look at solutions where we're supporting people that can't afford to do the rubbish. We used to get rubbish bags every week and we don't get any of that stuff anymore, but we're still paying for it. Um, so I think that another solution needs to be sought, um. You know, and some people just don't understand. I know they put the, the great little stickers on the, on the top of the rubbish bin and that's fantastic. But I mean, lots of people, um, can't read or, you know, if they can read, some of it is, it's a little bit unclear. Um, so yeah, and I think there needs to be maybe, um, maybe you get a discount for being a good rubbish person. I don't know. Yeah, something more on those lines rather than punishing people. Yeah, thank you.
I, I can see a landlord not passing the discount on to their tenants though. That's something I can see. Um, Debbie?
That's a very, um, positive initiative to incentivise things for our people who do follow, um, the rules with regards to recycling. I wouldn't want to see us do away with, um, any of that with the recycling either. I think we have a fantastic recycling plant. However, I don't want the people having gone down there and seen them, uh, the workers down there. I don't want them having to, uh, deal with things that they shouldn't have to deal with. Um, but I do believe education is a really important strategy that we can involve. And I'm not just talking about young people. In fact, the younger people do know how to recycle very, very well. It's perhaps looking at, um, initiatives and ideas and strategies to get alongside those who perhaps don't or may, maybe struggle with understanding how to do it. But I do think we can be positive and proactive in that. Kilda.
Okay, we've got J for Juliet. Oh, and that's two pages back. Spending needs to happen within budget without increasing rates. What services or luxuries will you stop? Debbie?
Well, I think I made it quite clear before, but I will say it again. I think with the process that Palmerston North City Council went through with regards to the budget coming up was very robust. And, um, we looked at every line bit by bit. We debated those issues. So don't think that things went through undebated. They did. And so therefore I couldn't see anything that we shouldn't have put into the budget. And we've got the, um, we've forecasted, uh, for short term, long term and medium term as well. Things have been phased, um, so we know what we're doing in three years' time and five years' time. They're looked at every year and, um, I just think that the process has been thorough enough. And no, um, there's nothing I wanna take away from that either. Kilda.
Uh, Bonnie?
Uh, I had a look through and, um, I, I also agree. I didn't see any luxuries. Like, I don't see any excessive spending in areas that are out of control or, um, unusual. I think our council does a good job. I don't, um, yeah, I think everybody there is, is trying to do the best that they can with what they've got in front of them. Um, and, you know, I didn't see any luxurious items. There were no excessive flights or anything like that that I saw. So, yeah, I'd agree with Fire Debbie. Thank you.
I think, I think that question is probably one you hear, hey, I know your car's meant to run on ninety-five petrol, but I think you can save some money by putting some ninety-one in there, sort of mentality. As in ninety-fives are nice to have, but ninety-one's essential. Is that something we can all relate to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, uh, W for whisky. I really like this one. Why do you think you're right for the role as councillor? Bonnie?
Um, I think I have a really good connection with a whole heap of people from various backgrounds and places, ideas. Um, so I'm a very good person for them to speak to and to advocate for them.
Um, I think I would be a good councillor because I have a, a range of um expertise or knowledge in areas that would be helpful to council. Um, I've got children that are still in the school system. Um. I've got a, probably a different perspective from some of the people in the council. Um, I'm still working. Um. I'm still, you know, the stuff I'm doing is, is relevant to council um works, things like sports grounds, things like that. I'm still using them. My kids use them, so I have a really good um boots on the ground uh with people. I, I talk to a lot of people. So I think I'd be a great councillor because I'm really good at advocating. Um. Yeah, and I truly believe in, in making our community better. Thank you.
Debbie?
I believe it's very hard to say this actually because those of you who are watching who are Maori would be, would know the saying, the kumara doesn't say how sweet they are or to um show off. So um I, I believe I've got heart, heart for Palmerston North City, heart for the people who live here. Um, I also believe that I've got experience and um lead, have demonstrated leadership in the course of my time on Palmerston North City Council. Having been um a school teacher and principal for many decades now, I think I have a good understanding of families, the needs of families, the aspirations of them, of young people, what their realities are. I'm very connected and always have been like, like my whanau to our um Maori community and the wider community as well. And it's just a privilege and a pleasure to serve and I want to give service to Palmerston North City Council. Kewa'da.
Now, this one is uh brought to by, was it, uh, was it a vision impaired friend of mine? Palmerston North have many places where tactical tiles are used on footpaths to assist users who are vision impaired to know where it's safe to cross the road and what type of crossing they're using. Is this a core function that the Palmerston, Palmerston North City should provide or a nice to have? Debbie? Uh R for Romeo.
I think every person who lives in Palmerston North, whether they're able, uh abled or disabled, need to have their needs met. And I would hope that we would be more sympathetic to the needs of those who have a disability. And uh I know that we've got uh groups within our city who advocate really strongly. If we can make someone's life better by having those uh resources available to them, then we should have them. Uh, I'd be really worried if people sort of who were um able to see those things themselves or if hearing impaired or whatever, um said, oh no, we don't want them to have it. It's about caring for people. It's about doing what we can do. And if we can do it, we should do it. And I don't see any reason why we shouldn't. It's not a nice to have. It's about being inclusive. It's about showing leadership. And leadership for protecting our people. Kewa'da.
Uh Bonnie?
Uh, I believe they're a core function as well. Uh, if it stops someone from having access to what they need to access, then um it, it needs to be there. Uh, so we need to provide things for all of our whanau within the um Palmerston North Ruahe. Uh, and that's, I, I agree with Debbie completely. So able, disabled, um brown, yellow, orange, green, uh their needs need to be met. Um, especially when it's actually creating a barrier from them accessing essential services or just getting around town, that, that shouldn't be there. It should be definitely a core function. Thank you.
Okay, we've got T for Tango. What do you see as the main difference between Maori landowners and hapu in the terms of their relationship with Palmerston North City Council? Debbie?
Well, Palmerston North City Council has had a really positive relationship with um, with Iwi prior to even the council being established. And in Temerai or Hine, there's a statue of Te Piti Te Awaiawi. And on it, he says, uh it says a comment from him, a statement from him, um which is very gracious. It's saying like, I've, I've shown um compassion. And it's now for all of you, everyone, to uh fulfil, to complete. The relationship has been respectful and responsible. Part of that is saying that when we had the vote for Maori wards, Palmerston North City Council, um we're unanimous in supporting that. And um, and have been um throughout, very supportive. The relationship, we have a group called Te Piri Ko'ko in council and they work alongside of and collaboratively with council staff as well for the betterment of the city.
Bonnie?
Uh, I, I would think they would have two very different roles. Um hapu, iwi have a, a completely special relationship with council. Uh. This is their finua, this is where they're from, they're the ahika. They would make the decisions um in relation to their relationship with um council. Uh, with owning a land block. Uh, so if I brought a piece of a general title land in um Palmerston North, um my considerations would be, I think, different to um. I would still have to respect mana finua. I would still have to consult with them. Um. And our relationship with the council would be different because we, we're rate payers. Uh, also, we, we're still kaiake of the land. We're still Maori. We're still connected to the finua. Um, but I would not be standing on relationships that were completely special and, and um yeah, privileged to, to mana finua. Yeah, na nahi.
Okay, we've got a few questions still there, but we usually take a half-time break at five o'clock. What should we do? Should we ready, go for the rest of the questions or should we take a break and then come back to the rest of the questions before hard-hitting questions? No problem. No problem.
The crowd looks like they want to stay longer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It, it feels like, you know, a very positive campaign from where Harry with the answers. There's like, not, there, there's like very good agreement. Okay, uh you're welcome to chase it, Stanster, if you want to. Uh K, uh was it K for kilo? How do you plan to use deliberative democracy to ensure residents can directly contribute to the challenges our community faces?
Oh, can you keep that on? How do you plan to use deliberative? I actually read through this and I was like, trying to break it down. I was like, hey, what's, what are they trying to get at? Um.
You want the card here?
How, yes, please. So how do you plan to use deliberative democracy? Can directly contribute to the challenges our community faces. I think that's just about being inclusive. Um, so making sure that um everybody is participating and is um involved in the process of um our processes. So when um something comes up for consultation, we need to make sure people are consulted. And not just the people that would usually engage, but people from all over. I think sometimes um yeah, I think sometimes democracy gets left behind because we don't actually get that consultation. It's just particular groups that are participating and that's when it, it all gets left out and, and missed out and people get left behind in the processes. So I think we need to talk to the people that are facing the challenges, um the communities that are actually um affected and we need to make sure that they're at the table when we're talking about them and they're actually, um, we're deliberately doing that. I think that's what that means. Thank you.
Kewa'da. I'd have to agree with that as well. I think that sometimes um you know, there are differences within our community. Different people have different preferences. I know for Maori, a kanohi ki te kanohi would be really helpful. Um, and a hui, sometimes going into places like council might be very foreign for some of our people. And that's even those from other um countries who migrated here. Um, so we have to look at ways and avenues or strategies to engage them. Because if people become engaged, then they participate. When they participate, they become more resilient. When they're more resilient, then they're more empowered to contribute in a meaningful way. So I think that it's important that we just don't think one size fits all. Um, that we do go out and seek people's opinions, particularly if it impacts on their lives directly. Kewa'da.
Okay, AA. That's the right one there. Do you support household food waste collections to stop organic waste from going to landfill? Debbie?
Yes, I, I do support this because I think it's um, there's ways in which you can uh recycle organic food, uh compost and so forth. Um, I think it's important that we look for um ways in which we can utilise our waste better and we know that there are some by-products that you can have. I think here in Palmerston North, we've got a really good um initiative and system, particularly down at uh the landfill area. They make um compost from the things that they're able to recycle and then they on-sell that at a much discounted rate. I think that it's important that we look for those strategies, not, not just locally or even uh nationally, but even globally. There have got to be better solutions for our environment and we need to be open to all of those things. Kewa'da.
Uh, I agree. So it's um, I think it's definitely something that we need to do. Um, it comes from the earth, it should go back to the earth. And if you're not using it, why wouldn't you give it to someone else and why wouldn't we collect it? It's um, because we live rurally, actually, we use, a lot of our stuff goes to animals or um it's put back into the garden and mulched and all of that sort of stuff. So we do a lot of stuff organically. Um. And I think there's heaps of opportunity for young people to come and learn how to do those things. And I mean, we could do, um, it's just a massive opportunity. If we collected all of that, we could make something with it or do something with it. And there's a opportunity to have rangatahi or whoever wants to come and learn about how to do those things. Uh, yeah, no, great opportunity for council. Thank you.
Okay, we've got question Z. What's one big opportunity or challenge you see for the district or for the city? Bonnie?
One big opportunity or challenge? Um, I see the, they've cut all of the, well, halved the government uh funding into um roads and infrastructure. So I see that's going to be a massive challenge. Like we've got so much stuff to do on the roads and they've halved the money that they're giving to us. Um, which I think is actually negligent of them. So there's stuff that needs to be done. Um, I think that's a massive challenge in terms of opportunity. Um, maybe it's time to stop contracting and going back to employing people. I don't know. I just thought that could be an opportunity. Um, because you know, how to struggle always comes opportunity. Think we're going to have to be adaptive and um find new solutions. Because it's not going to work with um the budget cut. So thank you.
Debbie?
I think one of the big opportunities we have available to us is Te Rangenui, which is the uh connected roadworks that would, uh, well, not just road, but road, freight, um being on rail and also uh planes. That we've got the opportunity geographically, we're central and we're able, people are able to come into our uh region, into Palmerston North. Um, if we're all connected, so we're just, you know, poised, ready for that to go. And there'd be many businesses that have moved here or set themselves up um in the anticipation. They too can see that that's going to be a wonderful opportunity for us to um do that. With regards to um, what a, what's a challenge? I think one of the challenges would be as um, Fire Bonnie had mentioned, would, would be the uh roading and getting the appropriate level of funding we require to maintain our roads to the appropriate level. Because money was pulled out very, very quickly um from Thelmas for that. Kewa'da.
Okay, we've got D for dinosaur. No, and I better change the graphic. What is your view on residential, commercial and industrial growth in the city? Don't say district on there, but it's a city council. Um, Debbie?
Well, one of the things I do know, having been on council, is that um we are growing. Palmerston North City is growing. And that's a good thing because people are choosing to come here. They're either choosing to come here or they're having more in their whanau. Both are good. Um, but with that brings opportunity for um growth in uh businesses and commercial activity. And I think that um the city planners have oversighted that, that they're identifying areas constantly. Um, that would be best place to put our residents, best place to put our businesses, um and other development, in particular how, what areas to look after. Um, where there might be some um consideration required for heritage and also for accessibility for people. So I do think that that's completely positive. Kewa'da.
Okay, um Bonnie?
Uh, I think that it's uh um absolutely a positive thing, but we do um have to carefully plan where the infrastructure is already built and where the best places to um continue that build is. Um, I just see it as a massive um positive uh in that the growth is, it's going to be exponential. So um I think it's projected to have like so many more people here. Um, but of course, we don't have the infrastructure for that at the moment. We don't have the housing. Um, so it's good that the council's already looking for those options and um yeah, I fully support the, the growth areas. Um, of course, in that industrial area, um you know, there's going to have to be other considerations like how it affects the residents that already live there. Um, yeah, but no, it's a positive. Thank you.
Okay, uh we have N for November. What will you do to stop poor council expenditure and allocate resources to critical infrastructure and rein in huge increases? Bonnie?
Um.
Do you want the card?
Yes, thanks. I'm getting a bit tight.
Oh, I, I certainly can relate to that.
Uh, what we do to stop poor council expenditure, allocate resources to critical infrastructure and rein in huge increases? Um, I think that because the council is actually advised by people that know what they're doing. So people come in and, you know, actually they're in charge of those areas and it's their job to research and to um look at those expenditures. I, I would, if it, if I was going to rein it in, I am quite a, a tight person in general. I'm pretty cheap. So I would be asking questions around, is that the um best? Is that the best value for money? Uh, are we using the right materials? Are they at the best prices? Um, I would be questioning everything, which I think is probably annoying. Have we, you know, investigated alternative um ideas? Uh, so that's how I would rein in huge increases. But I don't know if you can. Like if infrastructure is needed and that is what we need to progress things, then you, you're going to have to pay for it. So just looking for value for money. Absolutely.
Yeah, Debbie?
I think there's an assumption made here in this question that poor council expenditure happens. Well, now I'm going to argue against it and say, go back to what I said previously. And that is that um council have debated every item that has come up. And every budget line, every um sort of project that's put on. When things come to council, the staff do a very, very good job of making sure that they provide several options. And um council look at those options and they're the best considered options at the time. And um that is important that people realise that if they're not sure of that process, then they're certainly welcome to come to council and to observe what goes on. Likewise, to read, read that as well in the minutes. But um allocating resources to critical infrastructure, um of course, is something that's pivotal and per, uh paramount as well in our considerations. Kewa'da.
Since we are on very tight crew, we've got to take a five-minute break so Nick can do what he needs to. He is just, yeah. Unfortunately, yeah. So we'll take a five-minute break and we'll be back uh to finish off those questions, then hard-hitting questions. Then hard hitting questions. Oh, heck, that was quite a good break. I think we're all a bit more energised now from that. You've taken off the muki? Oh, sweet. Okay. Yes, yes, we're all refreshed right now. Okay, let's get to question L. Do you think Maori wards, such as our own, and I'm going to, I feel like I'm going to bull this one up, Te, who, was it? Poa ward? Poa, 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 poa. I'm going to get there. Poa ward, Maori ward strengthens democracy. Why or why not? Debbie?
Clearly, I do agree that having Maori wards strengthens democracy. For the very reason that it addresses historical under-representation, it also recognises the significant and unique role of Maori with regards to Tatariti or Waitangi. And I think that it's important that we engage mana finua, tangata finua in all of our decision-making. And that acknowledgement is really significant. So yes, it highlights democracy. If you don't have that, then you can't necessarily say it's democratic. Because we haven't included the people who need to be sitting at the table and acknowledge them for their contribution and for the unique role and position they have. Forere tina koto.
Bonnie?
I always look at Tatariti as a contractual agreement. That's just the way my brain works. So, you know, we had an agreement and a party did not honour that. So someone has broken the agreement and it's still not right. The only way we could democratically address that is to have 50/50 seats. That's my thought on democracy. We are, you know, the agreement was two parties. But, you know, it's a step forward. It's an absolute step forward to have Maori representation. It's really important for us to be sitting at the table because what Fire Debbie said, we've been underrepresented for such a long time. We've got so much to give and so much to offer. You know, we're good people, we're smart people and we bring value. And it's really important for us to be sitting there. And if it's a system that's skewed, you know, the chances are that we might not be, but we should be. So I absolutely agree with Maori wards. Thank you.
Okay, A, B. What's your biggest priority for the next term and how do you intend on delivering that?
Oh, me. In terms of priority, I've got like a few small things that I'm quite passionate about, all the people around me are very passionate about. So one of them was that we didn't plant any more ornamental trees that they'd be fruit. So I actually agree with that. I thought that's a fantastic idea. And the other thing was around access to parking, which I feel strongly about as well. You know, we have parking meter people sitting outside and waiting outside of Orangatamadiki, outside of Waini, outside of the courthouse. Those people are already disenfranchised, they're already, you know, they're limited access as it is. There are things that shouldn't be there, in my opinion, and in the opinion of lots of others. The other thing is sports parking. You know, we don't have the necessary facilities at sports places, there's not enough parking. And yet we've got people going around giving tickets to people that already have problems with access, you know, that might have been very expensive for them to even get their kids there, they can't even afford the fees. And then on top of that, are now getting tickets for parking to watch their children. I think, I think a lot of our systems are set up for people with one child and, you know, like lots of us have lots of children. So we're running from here to there and all the same with, yeah, people that are in the sports scene, they're busy people. So I just don't think that we have the facilities to actually, to assist that. And we want to make it, I want to make it better. Yeah, thank you.
Debbie?
For me, social wellbeing for the community is really pivotal. I want to sort of make sure that I'm part of the solution as opposed to part of the problem about getting people involved in our community. Making sure that facilities are accessible for everyone. Making sure that we have places where people can go to, where maybe they don't have to pay anything to go in and enjoy it. I know that when we have our Espinard days and there's a whole lot of activities going on and we have our player coordinator there who's organised a whole lot of things, that people just have fun and enjoy each other. And I want to help people connect with each other. I want to help people in our community realise and appreciate what we do have here and also see the benefit of having Maori wards in our city and also the benefits of that collaborative partnership. Kia ora.
And one last box question. I feel this is going to be a short and sweet one though.
I'm really excited.
What political parties are you linked to? Debbie?
Te Parti Maori. As I'd mentioned before, I'm really proud to be aligned and affiliated to Te Parti Maori and quite happy to make that public as well. Kia ora.
Bonnie?
I'm the same. I'm Te Parti Maori. I do agree with a lot of policies from other parties as well, but yeah, strongly Te Parti Maori.
Okay, Nick, can you please roll on? Hard hitting questions, please. Okay, so hard hitting questions are the questions we ask all candidates. Now, just remember, we've only got, we've only got two here, so it isn't there. Thanks for pointing me to actually look at the right camera, Nick. Okay, so let's kick off with hard hitting question number one. Do you think the council is doing enough in the terms of wastewater treatment and disposal? Debbie?
Yes, I think Palmerston North City Council have made a concerted effort in making sure that our three waters and wastewater, of course, is tied up in that, is, is being treated appropriately. And in fact, I'd say that we, looking around the country, Palmerston North City is in the top third of the best going in terms of what we do do. And we're probably never satisfied, so we're continuously looking at improvement. But I'm very grateful for the staff that we do have on council who have made it their priority to make sure Palmerston North City, along with the elected members, has the appropriate process and strategy to deal with wastewater. In fact, all the waters, the three waters within Palmerston North City. Kia ora.
Bonnie?
I think the wastewater treatment people do a fantastic job. I'm all about if you can't drink it, then it should be going into the, into the finua to filtrate. So filtering it again, I'm not really into dropping it into the awa. So I think there's really, there is room for improvement. I do think they do a great job, but things can always be better. And I know that our council or Palmerston North City Council does a really, a much better job than others. So yeah, that's my thought on that. Thank you.
Okay, let's get ready for hard hitting question number two. Are you comfortable with the way the council manages its debt position? Bonnie?
From what I could see, we loan against asset a lot. And then it's the long-term loan structures that come off a, well, it looks like a central government, Debbie probably knows way more about this than me. But it's sort of like, looked to me like a mortgage. So we had it for a long spending time and then by the time it was, you know, the asset was nearly finished, it was finished, the loan. I think it would be really good if we start working from, instead of being in a deficit all the time, so we're debt, debt, debt. If we look at opportunities to actually get into the plus, so we're not always in the red. But I mean, it's the way that councils do it all over the place. So it obviously has been done for a long time and maybe it works well. Yeah, I'd have to look into that more, but thank you.
Debbie?
Certainly Palmerston North City Council don't like having debt, but we realise it's something that we do have to live within. And hence, the budget process was part of the, part of that was saying constantly, any decision made, we had staff there who were able to say, this is where the ceiling's at, or this is where you are in relation to debt. And it was an iterative process. So it happened over several months and we were able to get down to a point where we, no one's happy with debt. Let's be quite clear about that. But it was where we felt was we were best placed to deal with what we had to deal with and at the rate we did. So elected members are cognisant of how much debt we have and we're constantly looking for ways in which we can get that down from the ceiling that it is at. Kia ora.
Okay, let's get ready for hard hitting question number three. What was your position on retaining the Te Poa Maori ward for Palmerston North City Council and the Tonga Maori constituency for Horizons Regional Council? And why do you hold that position? Debbie?
Well, hopefully throughout this interview, this process, I've made it quite clear that I'm very, very supportive of Te Poa ward as well as with Horizons seat as well, Maori seat. And it is about equity. It is about making sure that Tatariti or Waitangi is adhered to, that we're just doing what we're supposed to be doing and making sure that Maori are at the table so that Maori values, Maori perspectives, Maori aspirations are integrated with everything that the council does in terms of their decision-making. And I think it's important to note that that goodwill is extended to everyone. We want, we work well with people. And so if anyone was offended by that, you'd have to ask why? Because it's completely positive. Kia ora.
Okay, Bonnie?
I completely agree. And, you know, if you want to have an indigenous voice or, you know, have an indigenous perspective, you've got to have indigenous people there. So, you know, you can't make decisions for people that are in your community, which we are, we are part of your community without us. It's really important that we're included in the conversations. There are conversations that affect us and impact us and our whanos. And we should be at the table 100%. I agree with Debbie, like I've said the whole way through, it's vital that we're part of the decision-making process and we add value. We do add value and we care about everybody in our community. And we can say that wholeheartedly, I can say that about Debbie too. We wholeheartedly care about everybody in our community. So we are, we are vital to decision-making. So yeah, thank you.
And I'm still yet to find a Maori ward candidate who is not supportive of retaining the Maori wards. I feel that there might be one, but that person did not appear on the show. So yes, so let's get four closing statements. Bonnie, you had to go up first, what your closing statement of why you should receive the voters' first preference vote?
This is, I feel the same. It's sort of, I could probably describe Debbie and she could probably describe me like, and it would be a whole lot easier, to be honest. I could easily do that. Like I said before, I've got a large network of people that I come into contact with, people that are not usually heard or valued, and I will be able to get their voice at the table. I'm a fierce advocate for, I've got young children, I've got youth input, they're talking to me all the time. I think I would be valuable in that aspect. And I was also, I've got a business background as well, so I've got, I know a little bit about business and property. So I've, you know, will be helpful, I think, in the next steps of where we're going with social housing and the building and the opportunities. I think I've done that before, so I would be good at it. Yeah, and I think I would be very good with other people on the board table. I get on with most people. I'm really good at hearing other people's opinions and points of view. I get on with most people. Um, I'm really good at hearing other people's opinions and points of view and um helping find a solution. I'm a solutions-focused person. So um I like to hear people's different ideas, uh hear what they think. Opposing is fine, that's great. Um, and then coming up with a solution that works for everybody. Thank you. Namahi.
And Debbie?
I feel that the experience that I bring to council, uh not only as a elected member and uh my role as deputy mayor, but also my life experience. And of course, you, you can't separate that from being Maori. Um, that, that adds to um my proven experience in leadership within the community. And I think that I have a great deal more to offer. And I feel also that there are some projects that I would love to see fulfilled um in the next uh three years. And I think it's important that we keep that momentum going. I believe in inclusive leadership. I, I believe in equity. I believe in Tatariti or Waitangi. And I think that all those things together lend for a better city, lend for a better society and nation. And I'm happy to be, stand up and be counted. Loreda, kamatu takakorero iko nei. Um, kia kaha tato tivi maori ki te tu tangata. Tēnā tato.
Okay, so just a couple of general housekeeping before going. So when it comes to voting, voters will be using the voting system single transferable vote. And as this particular ward has two positions, in order to get across the line, the, uh, was it, the candidates have to have at least thirty-four percent of the vote plus one to cross the line of the quota. So when coming to the selection, make sure you don't just look at just your first preference, but also your second preference. Because that second preference will also help decide who becomes the councillors that sit around the table for the next three years. Now, we've finished off with that particular housekeeping. Let's go to our It's in the Ballot productions. It's in the Ballot productions is a independent nonprofit organisation that is run on small dollar donations. Uh, this show, uh, this venue booking and these shows have been sat around, been produced by the hours of volunteer labour, such as myself here in studio as well as Nick, and also the hard work from Stacy, who has spent many hours making up graphics and all sorts of things for the show, and also for Paul who's been stepping in. And also for Carol who's been doing our social media and for the little bits that have come from Ray. Um, it's not easy to do it up. Now, these shows do still have fixed costs to keep running. Our venue hire today was a hundred and tw- twenty dollars. We, we have also our venue fixed running costs of fourteen dollars a day for the Starlink connection, which is what we're broadcasting out on at the moment. And also the Restream hosting account is thirty-one dollars. We also have an allowance for, on paper, we've allowed for two cars for transport. We've only used one in this case, but it was a hundred dollars per vehicle. And we also have an allowance of fifty dollars for refreshments. So if you'd like to help small projects like ours to help voters get informed, feel free to head to our Give a Little page and put in a donation. You can also go onto Eventbrite and purchase a Koha without admission ticket on this event or get a Koha with admission on other events that we have coming up. Or you can also directly deposit funds into our Kiwi Bank bank account. And uh if you want one, one with the least fees, direct credit transfers, because that get us and help us keep this going. As I say, I'd like to also thank our candidates for taking their time out on the Sunday to put their feet to the It's in the Ballot fire. To our audience who have sat there graciously clapped throughout. I thoroughly enjoyed it. And I, I mean, I've already think I've sat there and thanked the crew. Have I thanked the crew, Nick? Yeah, uh, doing a good job of trialling, doing what was effectively three rolls in one hit. Um, this ain't a normal thing. It was just a, it was give it a try, see how it goes and we'll go from there. Uh, we will be joined back at seven PM for the Palms North constituency for Horizons Regional Council, which we look like we're going to be having a full night. So thank you to all our candidates, audience members participate here. And we'll see you all back at seven PM tonight. Have a good evening.